My Mrs. McAvoy.
Good Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you all to the village board meeting for January twenty-sixth. Wonderful night evening to be out wandering around our village. Just to remind you that there's an emergency. We have six mirrors building closer doors to the mirror. It's going car to that leave until something rectified. Service personnel. If you are a smoker, it happens outside, not inside. Proven coordinates.
Yes, good evening, everybody. We have approval tonight for the board meetings of January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion. Any changes to legislative decisions?
I actually do have one correction. I was talking today. On the first side, I'm getting a future. Talking about handicap and the meter says nine AM, it should be nine PM. So make sure that change is made.
Yeah, thank you. Just so you know tonight, we'll abbreviate the January. Obviously, whether there's a want us to stick around too long, there's some things that we have to get through this evening. So as we go around the board, some of the board members are going to defer items to the next meeting. Tricia.
Very briefly, I have bills for the period of January ninth through twenty-sixth. Totally in one million, seven sixteen, three ten seventy-seven. The five largest of those was New York State Employee Health Insurance was February one hundred and seventeen thousand, one fifty-seven, ten. And this in Ford for a new Ford Explorer, which we bonded twenty-nine thousand, one eighteen ninety-one. PSE Geelong Allen, twenty thousand, seven eighty-nine, fifty-seven. Electricity Village Wide, twenty thousand, forty-six East Main Street. It was a New York State Main Street grant. And JR Holsenakas, sixteen thousand, one seventy-six ninety. That was for engineering for Tidere Theater planning for what? I think it might have been some sooner now, I'm not sure. And they told two oh three, two forty, two forty-eight. Have you had approval?
Motion to acceptance presented. Motion.
Second.
Any questions to legislative decisions?
And I do. I do just for your information, I have the kit balances as of twelve thirty-one. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay.
Public hearings.
Yes, the first of two. Notice of public hearing that certain real property lying between Lake Street and Havens Avenue as a village street. So that Havens Avenue is extended north and connected with Lake Street. Notice here by giving that a public hearing be held by the trustees of the village Patchogue on Monday, January twenty-sixth, six PM. Fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, to consider the dedication of certain real property lying between Lake Street and Havens Avenue as a village street so that Havens Avenue is extended north and connected with Lake Street, which action is pursuant to section six dash six ten, six dash six twelve, and six dash six fourteen of the village code of the state of New York. At conclusion, the closing of the hearing, a resolution will be considered authorizing the acceptance of the dedication of said property as a village street in downtown Patchogue, where developers allow it to save.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of board trustees. Before the board are copies of the plan. You recall that when this was originally, when New Village was originally planned five years ago, four years ago, the interior parking lots were originally owned by the village of Patchogue. And the plan was to have post-construction to have those parking lots then turned over back to us. This is one of the final actions we've taken on New Village. The parking lots that were originally owned by us, by square footage have actually been increased slightly. The lines have changed only a bit, but we've also gained the parking lot at the corner of Jennings Avenue. So the plan is to have reopen the Havens Avenue, rededicate Havens Avenue that connects with Jennings Avenue and have the parcels that were originally the parking lots owned by the village interior again owned by the village and returned to our ownership.
Any questions from the board? Basically, what's happening is that that area, the connection between the interior parking lots of New Village and Lake Street is that that one section will be open. One of the things that was done with that also is because the concern became big. The concern is is people going in and out of the village. There are some traffic calming humps in that that will slow people down. The my concern was speed, people speeding through. And so we had some very long discussions about how to make that safe. So our primary concern with that is is the safety of the people coming in and out and going in that that doesn't become a speedway in there. And I think the way it's constructed right now, it is it is safe enough and it should be safe enough. And we'll do some signage also and making sure that it is safe. Comments by the board?
What is these? Be monos, be monos?
That's everything you can do is.
Sure. You mean fifteen, you definitely have fifteen.
Yeah. We'll do that also.
I think I'll be there.
Okay. Would you do that with this motion? Okay. Comments from the public? Yes, sir.
May I answer?
Yeah.
As you can see, it's important enough for me to come to walk through the snow. I live at the New Village. I strongly urge you not to open the street to through traffic. Traffic is already horrible as it is and opening up will create a dangerous situation for residents wanting to enjoy the courtyard, family, friends, pets. I have to rush home every day from work with the hope that I can find a spot for non-residents who are trying to escape parking fees, fill up the entire lot. This is the interior lot. This is, this at times forces me to pay for parking just to go home at night and then either feed the meter later or go out later at night just move my car when I can find a spot. I'm surprised that this parking lot is not dedicated to the residents of New Village already. I mean, this is a residential, it is in downtown Patchogue, but I think there has to be a balance. Just like any of the other developments, they should have their own parking lot. This long, like the late night noise and outside bands playing, that could be addressed at another time. From all the neighboring bars will also need to be addressed, a huge factor in determining. It's also a huge factor in determining if I'll stay longer when my year's lease is up. The noise is terrible. I I go to the bars, so I can't say that they're bad, but at a certain time at night, when it's two, three thirty in the morning.
You're a hundred percent correct.
It's ridiculous.
Two hundred percent correct, has to be addressed. And we talked about it, we talked about it with the chamber and the restaurant owners. And as we get closer to some of those those conversations, we'll even begin.
I.
What is, what is your name? Does she is?
No.
My name is Sean Kazmart. And actually, sir, I grew up a block away from you.
I know you, I'm looking at you saying, I know you. Yeah, are you Davidson?
David Kazmart, yeah. So.
Because maybe later you can give, to see if you can get your phone number so we can touch base with you because we've been a little bit bothered in terms of that, the noise and.
Sure. Again, opening this lot will only bring more congestion and potential dangerous situations to an already cramped space and force residents to become more uncomfortable as they have to battle non-village residents just to get home at night. So it's basically all I have to say. It's a, it was a big priority for me, to shiny it home is crazy and the noise. And I think that's a big reason why a lot of New Village is vacant. It is, well, from where I live in my building, it's.
Which building are you in?
I live in the building next to the taproom. So it was, if I could just have a few more minutes to speak. I live in the studio apartment and New Village doesn't actually own those. Long Island Housing Authority does. And I can tell you the horror story. Upon returning from deployment, from eight-month deployment, three months ago, I tried to get in here and it was hell getting in through the Long Island Housing Authority.
That was bullshit, really?
Yes, absolute hell.
The roach was hanging.
Because the way it worked out is my pay stubs were different from when I was deployed because I was making, I was in a tax-free combat zone and they just made it hell, absolute hell. I fought and fought and fought because I wanted to live there really bad, but.
Look, oh, she got a hole in you at that point.
That's, those are some of the things that I I could, I see potential new young residents battling with because all of the studios that I know are pretty much vacant there and.
Let me give you my card. Drop me an email. Well, you want to, I'd be glad to enroll with some of these things because there are things I'm not prepared to snitch us today. You can email me. Or the, I don't know, you can use. But either way, let's sit and talk about all of these things.
Yes, sir, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Now, are you in the military now?
I'm reservist now.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned parking. Now, don't you have a parking space in New Village?
So I do. I already paid thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. That additional parking space is an extra sixty-five dollars a month. That's a cable bill, rent bill, heating bill.
What about the lot on Jennings that's virtually not even used?
Okay, so I don't know which lot you're talking about.
Across from the firehouse?
During Friday, Saturday nights, it's impossible. If you don't, if you don't leave work at five o'clock and get home at five thirty, you're not getting a spot.
Even now in the winter time?
Even now in the winter time, which is great. That means that Patchogue is becoming a hotspot and there's no problem with the commerce. But if you're going to place housing in the middle of, you have to have a balance. And I don't think that opening, I know the reason behind it. Opening those streets is going to potentially make businesses want to go in there, but I don't know. I just, I think it did.
You know, if you want, like I said, it got multiple, multi-levels of planning. And there's a decision has to be made. John, thank you very much. But really, can I hold me? I'd love to sit down and go through because I've talked to some people that love it and they haven't had the issues of that. But if this is where it's coming from, then I need to really address it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, one more. Trustee Devin just commented. Do you have a village sticker on your car?
No.
You should pick one up because then you wouldn't have to pay in the meters and the parking lots.
What are these?
No fee.
As a resident.
As a resident, you'll be able to park.
Except for meters, except on Main Street.
Yes.
Oh.
So you can park in the parking lot and you don't have to pay a meter.
If you have a registration, I can give you one right now.
Sounds fantastic. I'll meet you after noon.
Get them in the back.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening. Tom Snurr, Forty-three Gentles Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Martin.
I've come down here for the last six months concerned about traffic on Jennings Avenue. And twenty years, not going, no offense, I'm not going anywhere after the year. And opening it up, that is going to make traffic worse on Jennings Avenue. Haven should be further gets that way if they connect directly with Jennings. Now that you put the New Village in and it's going to line up directly with Jennings. That block is not wide enough for traffic that you're going to be allowing to come down there. I have concerns about the bars, the people parking in there and coming out of there at night. You're driving down my block. And without having DWI, how many police officers you put in there, you cannot control that. So this is not the first time in here, concerned about the traffic on Jennings Avenue. I think opening it up, while I have certain planning phases is a mistake. I think you have to go down there to take a look and along those lines. But at one point, we were talking about making it a one-way street. And I don't know how you can open it up. It's not fair to the residents of Jennings Avenue. It's just not fair. It's not fair to the families. You know, I'm, I come here to speak, talk to my neighbors, try to encourage them to come. I'm not going to repeat what they say to me because they're extremely frustrated. It is a great block, it is a great community. You know, unfortunately, we had a fire on that block the other day and you should see the people rally around each other. And it's going to be dismantled, I'm telling you, it's going to be dismantled if you open that up. The families that have been there for over twenty years are going to leave because they're done. They are fed up with the traffic and the health and safety concerns on that block. So I guess the decision is yours whether to open it up or not. You know, you can be, I think, call the, look back afterwards and second guess everything. That's, you know, that's not my point for being here. And it's not to be critical of you either, that's not my point. My point is I have a real concern, a real concern for the safety of my family and for the people on that block. So I just, you know, like I said, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you very much.
I'm Bob McAvoy, Cedar Grove Street. I guess I'm shunning upstream amongst the comments. I look forward to the street being open. I want to go back to the bank just like I've done for the last forty years by coming down that way instead of going all the way around and going through all kinds of maneuvers. And I'm sympathetic to what these folks are saying, but my personal feeling is that there should be some policemen parked in that street. And if some, if people are driving drunk fast, whatever, there's a remedy for that. As a matter of fact, there's a policeman sits on the corner of Cedar Grove Street and South Ocean and North Ocean Avenue. And I've mentioned to him a couple of times that the stop sign by our street is totally ignored pretty much. People roll through and his response was, I don't want to quote him exactly, I don't remember, to the effect that he could get enough tickets parked over there. They said, well, that's not my concern. My concern is that people roll through the stop sign by my house. At which point he reiterated that he could get the tickets he needed over there. So I mean, maybe he could park on Jennings Avenue a little bit. I don't think it's, maybe two or three of them could park for a while. At any rate, my feeling is I put up with that being blocked off for X number of, two years, whatever it is. I look forward to it being open again. I didn't want to say anything, but I don't, you know.
Well, you'll catch me at the mess on Sunday.
Well, yeah.
Any other comments?
Same family, Jennings McAvoy, thirty-five six six. We really have been waiting for, you know, the completion of the construction. There was a giant pole there. You know, we have our little ways because we're older now and go to the bank and do new things. It's nice to be able to go to Main Street without going all the way down North Ocean and all the way around the front or all the way in the back. We have to go all the way to the Y to get on Main Street the other way. I can understand, talking, listening to this gentleman, that perhaps making it one way into underneath, what, Panier Way? One way and then maybe go out, whatever, Oak Street or something, that's fine. But I mean, just to have the accessibility of Main Street would be good. And I understand anyone who's living in New Village, because I know what the noise is because I hear it from my house and I'm about three blocks up across from the cemetery. So I can hear the noise and I know what it's all about. At any rate, we're just, it's a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we reserve decision on a piece of this and pass on the question? I'll make a motion to reserve decision on the, pass through, the opening of Havens to Lake Street and approve the transfer of the property from the, from Tri-Tech to the.
Sure. So the judicial clear.
We'll leave here close for the moment.
Right. The special decision on the opening.
Right.
Approving the transfer of the interior parking lots to the road back to the village. That's perfectly fine.
Because I think that's what Ms. McAvoy said, you know, to the issue, maybe just make it one way going into it. Might be, might be, also, so it would not be.
Yeah, traffic is only moving one way.
So let's take a look at it, let's kind of take a look at it. I do have one other question for you. How is it prior to New Village being there? Because there's always a through street. Was there traffic before they closed it off when Jennings went and then turned into Havens? How was, I'm sorry, yeah, how was the traffic prior to New Village? Because that was always a through, I mean, it wasn't like a line, but it was a way for people to get to Main Street.
You're asking, my opinion, it's, it's worse now. I think the speed they travel at is faster now. And you didn't have all the bars down there and things along those lines, restaurants or, you know, things along those lines. So it all depends on the time of day and, but my, my personal opinion is it's worse now.
Okay, thanks.
I'd have to say I think the Y adds to the traffic because I go to the Y and I frequently, I mean, I get on Cedar Grove Street and I, I probably have it, I learned in the military, I watch everything. And I watch the cars behind me, how many there are and where they go. And I'm going to the Y and frequently the three or four behind me are going to the Y. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons to be coming down. And maybe, maybe a one-way street just going north makes more sense.
Yes, you're going south going into it.
Going south, going into it.
I was going to say if you.
No, going south, because how will you ever get it through?
Because once you let them in, they gotta figure out how to get out. But they can only get out one way. They can't do, they can't make a left turn onto, well, they can't make a left turn on the Main Street. They only make a right turn.
No.
If you come south. Oh, Havens, sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In the old days, you couldn't make a left.
I mean, maybe the other way is is you enter there and you exit out with this traffic light.
Yeah, and that's not bad. That's a slow traffic kind of deal.
Now, we do two motions?
No, doing one. We do as one motion, motion, accept the transfer of the properties and reserve decision on the opening of Havens Avenue.
Let's really take a couple of motions.
Also.
Changed by.
Justice.
Trustee Devin. Want to say it?
Aye.
Okay. So what's going to happen is we need to do the formality of the transfer of the property. Just because that's just the formality that we need to do. But we will reserve decision on the opening of it. We'll have some discussion about it, figure out a way to handle everybody's issues all of it.
Notice here by giving that a public hearing be held on Monday, January twenty-sixth, six PM. Fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, for men's section four thirty-five dash twenty-two C of village code to provide an exception for non-havable and/or basement space from capitalizing the off-street parking credit and to require any containment and leave of parking space remain prior to issuance of a building permit. Copy of which proposed of the laws filed by the office of village clerk. At said public hearing, any person who would be interested would be given an opportunity to hear.
This has to do with what we call a pilot prepared lieu of parking in that there is a fee that is charged if you go from the dry retail to restaurant space, market selling space. If you were dry retail, which many of what, most of what businesses were at one point in time, now you move into what obviously is beginning to happen with the, with restaurant space, the number of parking spaces needed is much greater. So what we do is the building and housing, the building department has a calculation as follows. Based upon square footage, for the number of parking spaces needed for dry retail, it is a different formula it's for restaurants. What we do is if the restaurant comes in, according to say, based upon the occupancy and the square footage, they need sixty spaces. The prior use required twenty spaces. They have to pay for the additional forty spaces. One of the things we didn't account for within the law, and we use total building square footage. For most buildings have attic spaces and many times storage, basement space, which is storage, but not habitable space. Space that cannot be used for the purpose of serving the public. So what we're, we're saying here in this, this law is that non-havable space will not be included within the calculation. And basically, only the space that is used by the public, not any space that is not used by the public. Attic space, basement space, stored space or closets, it will be just the usable space by the public.
What about kitchen space?
Kitchen space, no, it does, it does because you have people working in kitchens.
Right.
You understand? It would count because, and that's, that's all taken into account within the calculation, all of those kinds of things. But it is habitable space.
So that's a considered habitable space.
All it is, this, this piece of legislation is just a function. And we have some things that are, one of the reasons, some things are coming through the planning board that this would affect, that we need to really kind of get this under books to be able to do it. Comments by the board? Comments by the public?
Good evening, everybody. John Bojek, Good Morning Street. I remember speaking at the original public hearing on this, so it was only in effect for about a year. So do we actually, have we actually gotten money?
Oh, yes, we have. Yeah, the South Ocean Avenue, there's the Hoshi, that Hoshi, but there's a, a sixty-place.
Going into the old Jays in the center there?
Do you have an example of how much the, ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand?
It was around twenty thousand, I'd say.
Yeah.
Well, Rumba also has a calculation because there are additional spaces, which is exactly what we wanted to catch the Rumba project.
That's where the direct.
Right, right, okay. So do they pay upfront lump sum payment?
Yes. It then goes into a dedicated capital fund.
For.
Partnering.
For the.
And that's as it goes along with the meter money and those, those other things so that when we have a point that we can start to create more parking, to relieve some of the issues. Mr. Kastner just was speaking about it.
Okay, so this equation is going to probably reduce the pilot fee, right?
The opposite.
Yeah, is it increasing?
Yeah. Because the catching the, or excluding this space from the credit increases the number of parking spaces you would otherwise have to pay for. Because if you included this amount, these non-havable spaces and basement spaces in your retail credit, you could reduce, by increasing the number of cars you have on your retail credit would decrease that deficit that you would have if you inserted a restaurant. So now what we've done is we've reduced the square footage and that would increase the number of parking spaces you would have to pay for if you were to change your use from retail. The retail economic encouragement that this board wanted to adopt continues. If you went retail to retail, you do not have to buy a parking spot in Patchogue. However, if you went from retail to bar and then you want to play the argument that you'll, with gross square footage, you want to, you have attic space, you have basement space, so I really only have to pay for this many parking spots. That's the gap that this, this legislation is proposing a change.
So I completely misunderstood. I thought it was going to reduce it, meaning it's going to increase.
It actually does because it.
It doesn't increase the fee, it eliminates square footage. The fee amount per spot remains the same.
Okay, so then the only thing I would, well, I presume you're going to adopt this anyway. The only thing I would suggest is twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, there's a lot of money for a new business. Yeah, I know in some of the other jurisdictions that adopted this, they permitted businesses to pay that fee over a couple of years. So it wasn't a big impact. That might be something you might think about.
We, we work, we work with it also. Any other part about it is that once you get into somebody who's investing the half a million dollars in something, if they're squeezing themselves at twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars, what's the viability of the business itself over time?
So I mean, it's fifty, sixty thousand, um.
Yes, but we were very apprised of them at the beginning. It was so they were able to manage these dollars and to remember their, their plan is, whatever their business plan is. So it's not one of these, it's at the end of the deal, you say, well, wait, now you'll be sixty thousand. Very much on the front end, but it's, it's part of how we do business.
Okay, well, then with that, with that one year recommendation, sounds like a good change.
It's also a lot cheaper than a business having to build their own parking lot. Say if they're right on the highway, you know, then.
Right, it's only, but it's only contribution, those, those parking spaces, garage spaces, about twenty-five thousand. Once you create one parking space in the garage and correct.
About that.
And about what, fifteen thousand for surface parking?
Yeah.
Right?
So we're not getting a lot of spaces.
You're not getting a lot of spaces, you're getting a contribution to it.
Yeah, what you're getting is that money that you can reap, you know? An old attorney would tell, told me as a business, don't think about stacking dollars, think about stacking dollars. You know, because if you spend too much time looking for the dollars, you'll never find the nickels to go over them, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Really is. That's Paul. I was at all the leaders here. I've talked to all the leaders here. It looks to me like a call, you spend too much time on the dollars, it's a little hard. But that being said, a motion to approve is presented, oh, I'm sorry. Motion. The move is second.
Second.
Want to take it?
Aye.
Uh, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one thing. I'd like to request the board to hire Colin and Donowski, LLP, to provide audit services for the year ending May thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen for the village, including the justice court at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. Motion?
Second.
Mr. Kozic, recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend it though. They have an increased history since they started with us.
Go ahead, David.
Aye.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everybody stay safe tonight.
Mr. Keys?
No, nothing time, Mr. Mayor, but I just ask the fellow board members to take driving down Cedar Avenue for the next couple of weeks and love to know what you think on Cedar Avenue.
I'll drive down Cedar Avenue.
Trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'd just like to make a motion to request approval of set of public hearing to amend section two thirty-eight dash twenty-nine E of chapter two thirty-eight of Village Code to require smoke detectors in sleeping rooms.
So, that's a motion. Second. Don't take one too fast?
Yeah, we take one too fast.
Uh, February ninth?
Second? Second, one favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
And just one more thing. Uh, request approval to, um, that public safety officers, Matt Flower and Stephen Armstrong, be appointed as permanent part-time offici, uh, officers. They were originally hired as, um, seasonal employees and since, um, a bunch of the guys got full-time jobs now, we, we're going to need you guys to stay on and fill in, so... That's why we, uh, the hiring is, uh, you know, permanent part-time. And, uh, that goes back to September according to Jim Barberich.
Motion? Second? Aye. I have nothing to add. Trustee Debby?
Aye.
Trustee, what is your safety about?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for hiring Maria and Keith as a fitness instructor at the rate of thirty dollars an hour. It's motion.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second and last, as Mr. Mayor, I'd like to renounce our second annual snowman contest.
Something to do with today?
I think it's a good shot. Uh, the odds are with me.
I had no idea you were doing the same today.
This is off Facebook page. When it starts snowing, follow up, go outside, get to work, give your snowman a title. Send us a picture of the snow, artist, or artist, with a snowman along the main age, dress and phone number. Uh, mail this to Snowman Contest, Coach Patchouli, Park Slum and Three Eighty Bay Avenue, or email to mjustizia@patchouli.com.
Now, I'm looking at the crowd that's here today.
Well, John's, John already started.
Yeah, right.
We're staying in.
Who is going to, uh...
Jojo's gonna do it next week sometime.
Yeah, we're staying in.
Okay. And Don's gonna check the signage.
Okay, I'm real cool about this, well.
Thank you.
We, we have to second that, that's...
No, that's just an announcement. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Don's gonna pick up the carrot and the hat and stuff and melt.
And everything went okay with the pool pool one?
Yeah, oh, thank you, yeah, it went very well. No complaints. They, uh, have a, uh, current gift to the, uh, Patchouli Metro Youth Association for five thousand dollars.
Wow.
And, uh, they have, uh, already given the village their stipend for the use of the constabulary. Very well run, no, uh, red cups on, we've had them.
Good, good.
Yeah.
No blocking the traffic, people, such a good, that's good. I know, it's a compliment to get you, I appreciate it.
Oh, man, yeah.
Any other comment by the board?
Yeah, I, I wanna compliment, I think, Joe and Jodeen. Put these skirts, these reflective skirts on the stop signs on the cross streets and make everything so much more visible.
Yeah, they are.
It's really, it's really good. I don't see them anywhere else. You guys do that. Joe?
Of course I would be, Tom, I don't know.
Has one. Put it to your ears, we, we come by the public, huh? We got, it looks to be a...
I'll do the prosa.
Oh, yeah.
I'll do the prosa.
Yeah, what can we do?
You got to, because it's gonna be buried in the snow now.
It's the first amendment time.
Don Waxman, Sixty Hundred Street. Good evening. No snowmen for me. Just to show you, Thursdays now and Saturdays. I thought it was just the holiday season, every Thursday. And I have pictures here of somebody getting washed into the sewers. That's it, quick reminder. You good?
And I, I actually get it now. I never did because I'm a subscriber.
I get it.
So, normally you don't get them as a subscriber. I pick them up, I walk in the house, I put them in the garbage. I don't even take them out of the bag or look at them.
We, we brush them with the car for a couple of days.
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna be amazed, I'm gonna suggest adding a sign.
The ceiling's gonna fall.
Heading, heading west on Lake Street, where West Avenue comes in, that there's a stop sign for Lake Street. The other night, I knew it was there, I couldn't see it, it was lost in the, the streetlight. So, I think we really need two stop signs. Because, really, I, I looked, I was looking, where the heck is it? It's lost in the trees, lost in the lights. And it's an accident waiting to happen, I think.
Where is that though?
Lake Street heading west, where it intersects
Where the spur is.
West, curves around and goes to Main Street. So, Lake Street has to stop. And there's a stop sign, so at night you really can't see.
Put a reflective skirt on it, Joe. Get a reflective skirt.
Yeah.
And I think I was dozing, you were talking about the, the race a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
I saw that, I mean, the parking lots were jammed, the railroad parking lot, bowling alley parking lot. And it just so happened, Sunday, I was due to go to the parking lot to pick up stuff. Oh, my God, it's gonna be a mess. I tell you what, I was amazed. The promoters must have told people or something, don't leave your garbage there. There was certainly race-related stuff, I think stuff that was put in the windshields, wasn't much. There was no cups, nothing. I was really amazed. So, compliments to the promoters, I guess.
That is the, uh, greater, long round, run club.
Same, yeah.
And that man also saved, right.
So, let's go with those, uh, snowmen. But, yeah, I mean, just unsightly, and they do lay around, and yes, people do drive over them, they turn to pulp, and it's a mess.
Can you replace the pages? Joe, could you, could you be on those?[1708.04]